So I'm calling to order the, the work session for the TACOS School Board of Directors for Tuesday, April 26, 2022 at 5:00 PM and this evening we have. Let's see, all board Director Hoover's here, Director Morris is here, Director Larson is here. Director Boiljack is excused and Director Prowriter has submitted her resignation. So I think we're all here. So welcome to anybody who may be listening in and what we have on the agenda for this work session this evening is to review, I guess, and make modifications to a couple of documents that documents that we've been working on. The first one is the Board Budget Philosophy. And then the Board Operating Principles. I think the Board Budget Philosophy is a little more developed. We'll go through each of these, I think, in order and see if there's any changes that we want to make. We won't be, this is a work session, so we won't be doing the final approval, but we get them in shape to submit to the board as a whole for a final approval. The Board Operating Principles, that's the one that we started, just to recall, working on with Amy Cass last month at a work session and that one may, may need a little more work on it. We just started and, but we'll make whatever changes those of us who are here think should be made and then, and then we may, may or may not, depending on how that comes out, we may or may not have one more session to get that in shape for a final approval statement. So if that sounds, does anybody have any questions about what we're doing here? Okay, so I'm gonna just, we'll start with the Board Budget Philosophy. I'm just gonna share. Who's disabled participant screen sharing? Okay. Debbie, can you give me ability to share my screen?
You should be able to share it now.
Okay. Keeps giving me host disabled participant screen sharing. But it looks like I should be co-host.
Yeah, you should have it now.
Yeah.
That's share screen. Okay, there it goes. Okay. So can people see that?
Yes, but it's tiny.
It's tiny.
It needs to be a little bit bigger. Just my opinion. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Now, let's see, maybe I can make it a little.
That's better. It's not right up against.
Let's go. How's that? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a document that the board has developed over the years and we modify each year depending on what needs to be modified. I think the last time, the only changes to this one where we added the under number seven staff and students. I'm, let's see, I've got a couple of proposed additions to this. Does anybody else have any thoughts on, on changes to this?
Right. I had both kind of a question and then a few proposed additions or just points to bring up for discussion, I suppose. So one is, I know we're trying to, or we've talked a lot about trying to really increase like a sense of belonging, connectedness with our students and our staff. I'm kind of as a part of our race and equity work. And so I wonder if there's space for having something in there around that piece. It could also be like lumped into prioritizing mental health and social emotional supports. But thought that there might be some value in adding that as a priority.
So you want to give me some specific words and where you want to put it and?
Oh, wordsmithing.
I mean, we can, you know, just a general, because I, what I would, what I gonna try and do with this is just kind of edited on the fly here and it doesn't, it's not gonna be the final, but just to get it in there and then we can maybe come back and look at it. Wordsmithing wise later.
Okay, let's see.
While you're thinking about that, let me see if I can, I've got a couple of additions that I was gonna add in. Let me just see if I can get those thrown into the mix here. I'll play around with the bulging here, but the two that I'm, I was interested in adding at the bottom was, so when this document was originally developed, it, it was actually developed originally during a time where we were having to make reductions and the budget was really tight and we were having to make reductions. So it's kind of the, you can kind of see the flavor of it there and, and kind of where the reduction should come. Now, and I think those are still valid. Should we come back to that? This is, but we're in a different time now and the time that we have in particular is that, you know, because of the federal dollars, particularly the ESAR dollars, we actually have a good amount of money that it's one-time money, but it's available to us for the next year or two, just to, to spend. And so I've added the, the two bulleted items there at the bottom. The budget will prioritize providing resources to support students whose academic progress has been negatively impacted by the pandemic. And that's, that's one of the main purposes that the, the federal government has indicated we need to be using the ESAR dollars for. And so I thought that was important to add that one in. And then the other one below that is the budget will prioritize and support expansion of successful programs that produce positive outcomes for students. So this is another one that, you know, one-time money. You know, what I have in mind here, for example, is programs like the robotics programs, programs like the CTE programs that, you know, are producing, are producing some really good results and could use, you know, we can take advantage of some of this money to use, you know, for purchasing equipment, techno- technology, that kind of thing. So anyway, that's, so those last two that I proposed adding are kind of related to the, you know, the current times that we're in for, and probably will be for the next couple of years. So that's what I would have in mind. So I don't know, back to Director Hoover, do you want to suggest any wording?
Yeah. So either we could do a whole new bullet point or potentially even just update the first bullet point. But so I've got the first one, the proposed new bullet would be the district understands that belonging and psychological safety are essential to individual student success and achievement.
So read that a little more slowly, just to understand that the what?
The, that belonging and psychological safety are are essential to individual student success and achievement. I can type it in the chat too.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. I'm almost there. Are essential to what?
A student's success and achievement.
Okay. Sure. Why this thing isn't letting me add mine to it? Anyway, okay. Other thoughts on anything that we have here? The two that I added or the two, or the one that Carly added or?
I have one more kind of question about number 12. So reductions will be made to elective offerings while attempting to maintain choices for students as part of comrades of education. So I know that you just mentioned that kind of when this was first developed or last developed, that we're kind of thinking more in reduction mindset. But I'm just curious around, you know, electives particularly. Electives are really beneficial, right, to other, to academic success, to other successes. And so I'm just curious kind of like what the thought process was around reducing electives.
Well, yeah, the, the thinking was basically just in line with what you just said is that, you know, we, we didn't want to get to the point of, sometimes there's a point in education of going only to like reading and math, only the testing things, that kind of thing. And we recognize exactly what you were describing is that, you know, a full comprehensive education involves, you know, a lot more than just the core subjects. The core subjects are very important, of course, but you know, that, that we wanted to maintain. That's, so that's, that was the intent. If you think there's some better wording here to make that intention clear, yeah, let me know. But that was exactly the intention of this, this particular one.
Is there, oh, we had Carly finishes.
I was just gonna say, I guess for some reason I'm reading that to say like reductions will be made to the budget for elected offerings based on other. Like if we need to make reductions to something, it would be an elected from, from the elective budget. Am I reading that incorrectly?
Yeah, that, that wasn't the intent, but yeah, if, if, if there's, I'm, you know, if you have a kind of a better way of saying that.
I almost wonder if we started it with. See. I don't know. Essentially like choice. Almost like in order to maintain a choice for students as a part of a comprehensive education. I don't know. I guess, well, why is it in there? Because otherwise we would automatically reduce funds for electives.
No, I think it's, it's just, there's a tendency, I think, in most, in a lot of cases to, when, you know, things need to be cut, there is a tendency to cut the, you know, the non-core stuff. And we just wanted to say, you know, please be very careful when you do that. Not to, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a balancing act here. Because there are times when you need to make cuts and yeah, it's, I guess.
Right. So basically, so I, you know, we hear what you're saying. But again, what, how, what Director Larson was saying that when it's time to make cuts, more than likely it's some of the electives are to go, not all. And I think that's part of while attempting to ma- maintain choices for students, right? So it's, we wouldn't say, hey, we're, we're cutting budgets. So we're going to take all electives away. We're going to take all of athletics away. We're going to take, you know what I mean? It would be a balancing act to see where we could right-size the budget.
Yeah. And like the, you know, typical example on, on athletics, we did not have to go there, but a lot of districts back when there was a lot of cutting, they basically shifted the cost of athletics on the students and families. And so they rate, you know, that's one way that they, that we, we fortunately did not have to do that. We thought that wasn't, you know, particularly with our demographic that we're serving, we didn't want to do that. So, but that's the kind of thing that, that comes up. So just to maybe I don't know what you were describing earlier, kind of attempting to maintain.
Almost like reductions will be made to elective offerings with discretion, attempting to maintain, or discretion might not be the right word, but like with care or with, I don't know. But also if like this is operating, the way that it's written is operating in a way that we prioritize not cutting anything that we don't have to in the elective realm, like then that's fine. I just like, I guess, like if there, if, like, if it comes down to like, this is the only place that we can pull or make a cut from or find money from to, to fund or support the elective and that I understand. But yeah, I don't know. It's kind of processing a little out loud. Sorry.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I, yeah, I might need to think on this one a little bit too. If you think of a better, maybe we can in the interim think of work on some better ways to, you know, word this one. I think, I think we're all in agreement on what we're trying to get to. It's just a matter of finding the right words. So yeah, let's work on that one. Any, anything else?
Also, you know, you were talking about this. Some of these are a reflection of the time that it was. Is there a way that we could really emphasize SEL in here too? Because it's, it's kind of vaguely in some of these, but I would like to see it be a really high priority for us, but since we have these ESAR dollars.
Yeah. So I think that's what number 14.
Right. Yeah.
Do you want to, you mean like?
I was just wanting to add.
Like specifically call it out in some way?
Call it out in some way and that the district will find ways to support it, you know, with right now, I just don't think we have the adequate staffing to support it as it needs to be supported. So how can we do that, especially if we do have these ESAR funds?
Yeah. And that, so you know, when I hear that, I, you know, two things. One is, you know, the, the state clearly does not support this area adequately. So that's advocacy is number is, is one thing. And then, yeah. And then, and the trick, of course, with ESAR dollars is these are one-time dollars and we know this is not a one-time need.
Right, right.
So it's, it's gonna, it's, it's a, it's a, we've talked about this in the Budget Advisory Committee. This is a, this is tricky because on the one hand, you know, the, the need exists and we, and we want to, to use these dollars, but the, the, the the tricky part is at the end of the two years, when the dollars go away, then what, then we're, we're, you know, we're kind of stuck and then we have to either re-prioritize other things some way or, you know, but it's, and in the interim, you know, we can definitely, I mean, we've already used ESAR dollars, for example, for social workers and, and we know that, and so part of the, the deal is during this time where we have that money, use that money, collect some good data on, on the, on the, the impact that those folks have on students. And then use that as part of the advocacy to the, you know, the state. So it's, it's, yeah. But yeah, if you want to give me some words to put anywhere in here, I'm, I'm happy. Again, it's, this is one of those ones I think we're all agreed on it. It's, it's a matter of, of getting, putting the right words in here.
Yeah, maybe we could add something to that. Number 14, that would make it even more clear. I don't know, Carly, what do you think?
Yeah. One of the things that just kind of came to mind, especially if we're thinking about like next or, you know, this upcoming budget and how we could use those ESAR dollars. I think about like using it to like build a foundation for something, right? So almost like build a strong, like the district will build a strong infrastructure for social emotional understanding and supports, right? So that could include, it could include utilizing caseworkers, social workers. It could also include just really building a strong learning community for social emotional learning and understanding. It could be restorative circle trainings. It could be an investment that way and really building capacity with staff so that then the social emotional learning work is ongoing and it doesn't need as big of a financial investment from year to year, because really training and capacity, I think, is the, is the biggest investment for social emotional learning work at least.
So I kind of, two things come to mind. First of all, this, so we, the other document is kind of closely related to this is the, the budget priorities, board budget priorities that is more focused on an individual year as this is more of a philosophical thing. So there's a little overlap there. I think if we need to, you know, particularly although infrastructure, that's a fairly broad kind of thing. If you want to see. Essential success understands. So I don't know. Do you want to give me some, some words about that? Some kind of concise words about that infrastructure concept? Build a
Let me see, so.
Thank you.
Something like that. I don't know that that's the right thing.
Losing my, let's see, ability to see that. No, there it is.
The district will develop and make strong support for social emotional learning, understanding and practice. That might, I don't know. I don't know if that's the best word.
Thank you. I think that's a little, adds a little bit more definition to what Carly first brought up.
Okay. Anything else?
Not for me.
Okay, so we'll think a little bit about this number 12 and maybe had to reword it a little bit. And then I think at that point, we should be probably ready to bring it to the rest of the group for consideration. Let's see. Let me save that. Okay. And then stop sharing that one. See if I can start sharing the okay, this one. Okay, people see this one, the, the new one, the operating agreement. Okay. So this one, the last we left, we spent, I think it was a Saturday with Amy Cass. We were kind of reviewing different operating agreements and thing from different districts and this was what kind of Amy had put together as a result of all the conversations. We had organized it in different, by different groups and pulled different things from different districts. Like I say, this one isn't quite as developed as the other one. So we might need another run after this, particularly when, you know, everybody's here. But what I thought we'd do on this one is just kind of go through maybe the yellow areas and see if there's any thoughts on how to address those particular areas. So I've got some some ideas on those. I don't know. Does anybody else have another particular, is it okay to just go through the, the yellow areas? Okay. So the first one is, we're kind of wrestling with the wording for the board will blah, 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 the needs and interests of all students in the district. I think my suggestion. I can find it. This was my suggestion that I put in there. Let's see.
I like that.
Okay.
I think advocates the word I wanted to use, but it didn't cleanly fit in that sentence either. So I, I like your rewording there.
Okay. Any thoughts? And others? Can we go that for the moment?
Yes, advocate was my word also. So I like the way you've fit that in there.
Okay, so that's that one. Let's see, the next section was okay. The board will exercise leadership and vision as students not managing. Let's see.
I wonder if instead it could just be like, because I, I get getting away from that deficit language more, maybe like so, and support the district in managing the day-to-day operations or is support not even the right word? Because we don't. What would be the appropriate word there?
Yeah, that, what I was, let's see, I was just looking at another, okay. My suggestion wasn't so. Students.
Almost, and where that first comma is like not even where the yellow highlight is, because that seems more positive.
Yeah, the other, see what was I, I was gonna do, I was gonna put in a, kind of just a positives.
Because I agree with the deficit kind of language. Like I don't think this, to have a document that's got a bunch of don'ts and nots and things like that. Like I think it's always better to frame things in a much more positive way.
Oh, that's good.
So my suggestion was to put the, you know, the board, blah, blah, blah. And we have to choose the district. And so, yeah, then we could have the the period there. And then the superintendent has the responsibility and authority to manage the day-to-day operations. So sure, takes the negative out of it. Yeah. Okay.
And then I assume for like, just clarity of role sake, that's useful to have in here versus just not having it at all and just saying, leaving it at the period after on behalf of students in district.
Yeah, I think it's just, it comes up quite a bit.
Okay.
You know, just to make it clear. Let's see. Let's see, what else?
Same with that second bullet on trying to get more use more asset-based language.
Yeah, this one I was, I don't know, I I didn't really have a um what would your suggestion be on? Some I generally, I agree, it's better to use that, you know, asset-based, but sometimes if so, the alternative would be to just eliminate the individual, an individual board member will not take unilateral action and just leave the rest of that. Is that what you're suggesting?
Maybe get rid of the first sentence after that.
Or members is derived from the majority of the board.
Yeah, because then it just has a board member's authority is derived through the majority of the board acting as a whole.
Yeah.
Which I think is all it really needs to.
Okay, okay. So your suggestion would be to do that?
That seems more positive and I think still gets to the and still gets to the intent of that bullet.
Okay.
The only thing I, the only other thing I was, I could be additive and trying to think about what the phrasing might be like. So I can work on it and then come back to, but like adding the idea of like a team in there too. Um so let me think about some language.
The other, so I kind of, um this next step was um this little thing about the board will make decisions on information, not personalities. The board will debate issues on the agenda, not one another. That whole um thing and the suggestion that there was a reference back to this third bullet, the board and superintendent will work to minimize misunderstanding, reduce conflict, supporting each other constructively, so forth, so forth. To me, I think my suggestion was to kind of combine this um this one in yellow plus the board will debate issues on the agenda and just put it all up in under the board and superintendent will minimize misunderstanding and reduce conflict, et cetera, et cetera. It seemed like there was a awful lot of overlap there. Let me see.
I think the reason why it's down there is because of how we decided to organize.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah, so at the top is the guiding principles, whereas that specific bullet is about what happens in the meeting.
Yeah.
But I do think that we could we don't have to have all those words there. We could probably just have like a sentence and then we could even reference C guiding principle or
Yeah, yeah.
Something like that.
Okay, the one, yeah, all right. So not one another. Prior to making a board decision. Um the one piece in there that I thought was useful, particularly because we were trying to work with this, you know, the the transformational relationship and partnership framework that came from the the E S D that we've been talking a lot about in the equity training. And one of their things was this uh board members has tried to make the best decision at the time without waiting for the perfect decision. So that one, I kind of put that one up under the guiding principle number three. And then, and then we could, yeah, what you're suggesting, Carly, we could you're kind of suggesting maybe eliminating some of these other words there?
And just maybe take out, so the board will make decisions on information. Do we need the and not personalities? And if there's like history in this room, why that beneficial, like that's okay too. I'm like
So you're you're saying take out the
Not the whole first sentence, just the and not on personalities. So the second.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, okay.
And then it goes on to say board members will act with the best information available, the times, the data. Yep, yep, yeah, basically. Yeah. You said you put um.
Yeah, I was, I was kind of suggesting putting the uh board members will strive to make best decisions at the time without waiting for the perfect decision up under uh but under this guiding principle, third bullet, but yeah, I it's it's fine down there. I mean, either either place is okay with me. So it just um see, what was the, is this similar? Okay, then the board will debate issues on the agenda, not one another, will gauge your critical thinking. Really offering.
I guess there is actually some value in putting that up as a guiding principle rather than in the board meeting, because I think that what that actually allows us to do is say, we actually don't have all the information that we need in this board meeting, so we're not going to make a decision. We're going to get that information and come back. Um again, it's still not crafting the perfect decision, but I think it's okay for us to then say we need a little bit more um before we get to a decision that we even feel good about. So I would say I I kind of like it in the guiding principles.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we could um so we could do this and then take that one. Move it up there. And actually, we have the, I was looking into personalities issues up in the guiding principles, so so we could just take, you know, that out of there. Okay. Okay. Critical things such as freely differing points of view for discussion. Looks in courage. I don't know, does this, I don't know, this one about the board will debate issues on the agenda, not one another. Yeah, isn't that, I guess that was the question, is that kind of covered in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like the only reason it could potentially be valuable in there and and it may not necessarily be long-term, but sometimes it comes up for folks, why why we may not be able to talk about something that isn't on the agenda? So that could be a way of just a place to put that we can only debate things that are on the agenda. Um but also this doesn't have to be the document for that either. Similar, I guess, to like the role clarity question around the superintendent and the board, they came up earlier too, so.
So if that's the case, in theory, we could just eliminate all that. Oh, sorry, on the agenda. Okay. 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 So is that reasonable? Like I say, I think we can take another run at this, this is kind of a perfected as much as we can here or get, you know, move it along and then we can come back again once more.
Well, the wording is more positive, so thank you.
Yeah, okay. And then the last one, let's see, or the next one was um oh yeah, the civil manner thing and the language. So I was, was my my suggestion were from, for some words were
Would respectful be a, I don't know, a delicate, you know, easier word to stick in there?
Yeah, the words words, yeah, that that could, that was another word that came. I was kind of trying to go back to our transformation document for some of the words that were uh there. And I think what did I, I came up with like collaborative and inclusive um meetings in a collaborative and inclusive manner. So I don't know.
Yeah, I I definitely vibe with those words better. I think part of my challenge was civil, similar to respect, I think. I I think what those um not necessarily what those means, there's a definition for both of those words, right? A technical definition, but like how they how you experience both of those things and project both of those things, I think are different. So I find it more helpful often to like really define what we want um rather than like having some broad things that I think could still elicit different responses that don't feel good for everyone.
Right.
Makes sense.
So that was, that was, so those are the two words that I was suggesting. Any other thoughts on different words, other words, better words? Otherwise, we can get rid of civil.
I think uh obviously the next time we have a board retreat, we can review those two and especially once we're back up to five board members again.
Yeah. Yeah, this one, we'll probably definitely want to review this document again when we're back up to five to get everybody. Okay. So.
I'm hesitant to to, I I wonder I wonder what would be like if we even took those words out and just said, so the board will maintain an open environment where each member is empowered to freely express opinions, concerns, questions and ideas in a board meeting. Board members will work together to clarify and reset discussions in order to strive for full understanding. If we wanted to add a piece that maybe said ideas in a board meeting that honor our courageous conversation norms, bringing it back to those um because I mean, I I like collaborative, inclusive, because those are like fluffy words that I enjoy, but they still to some degree elicit the same type of response in the sense of like, what is I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe something like respecting meeting norms or something like that.
Yeah, I was, I was, as like I say, I was trying to keep to the you know, words from this um document, we've been working on the
Yeah.
Things and so um
Maybe you could put those in parentheses for us to evaluate later.
Okay.
When there's more of us.
So we'll put this in. Guess we can kind of let me keep that in yellow indicating, I want to review that again. Okay. Uh and then the last area was uh see. Okay, so the question, the board will conduct its work in a manner that's kind of in response to the community. So uh there was a question about um connecting it to the strategic plan. So there's kind of what I, the word was, I guess, working in matters that kind of works, many consistent was the district teaching plan and race and equity policy. So that was, that was my thoughts on that one. So anybody else has got other thoughts?
No, I have nothing better at this moment. I think that's
Okay.
Also.
Okay, so that's all the other one. Are there any other? Let's see, so we'll just do this. So I don't know, is there any other? So we'll kind of clean this up a little bit with the yellows and so forth and then um yeah, so Dr. Hernani, I'm thinking what we should bring this to whenever the next maybe Saturday session or whenever work session or whatever, we have hopefully everybody back or
I think that'd be good.
Okay.
And we can send it out uh
Yeah.
Director Bowlerjack as well in a review of the language, everybody can see that.
Yep. Okay, is there any any other thoughts on this one? Sort of.
Not necessarily, just overall, I'm feeling a lot better about it. I think this is a like um the work that we did in the last session and in this one, I really appreciate the shift in how it's all organized. So um nice work and improvement, I think, from the the document we started with.
Right. Okay, so I will send both these edited ones that we've done here to Debbie uh to kind of clean it up and then she can send it out to everybody and we can go from there. So that's um oh, we had on the agenda for the work session, so any other thoughts? We can adjourn the work session and come back together at um six thirty. Let me stop sharing. Okay, everybody? Okay, the work session is adjourned and see you in uh six thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.